Are y'all ready? Alright, good evening. My name's Rodney Peterson, Superintendent of Schools, and I will be leading our meeting until our organization of the board is complete. At this time, I recognize that we have all members present, and if Ms. Tillman, if you lead us in our moment of silence, or is it Ms. Bradshaw? Yeah, and Ms. Bradshaw, if you lead us in our pledge of allegiance. And then we'll proceed with our oath.
Please call us for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, to observe social distancing, at this time, I'm gonna ask all board members that you could leave the boardroom and join your families out in the hallway. And Ms. Carla, or Ms. Smith, and Ms. Scruggs will call you in one at a time. And Ms. Dever will do your clerk of court. First candidate will be doing the oath of office.
Alright.
Y'all ready?
Yep.
And Candace, if you wanna, if you wanna, please wanna just kinda stand beside him?
Okay.
One of you can hold the Bible.
Alright, I'll hold the Bible.
Alright, if you will place your hand on the Bible and raise your right.
There they are.
Do you, Philip M. Gillis, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Person County Schools Board of Education? So help you God.
I will.
Thank you very much, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna ask you to execute your oath right behind you. There's a pen, and there's a code of ethics that you have to sign as well behind that.
Alright, so sign.
And the code of ethics is at the signature page on the last.
And then we'll get a copy to you, Mr. Bradshaw.
And then, Mr. Gillis, if you'd stand on this side of the sign and kinda position the children in front of each of you.
In front of, in front of the crew.
There you go.
Thank you, you're smiling, because I can see.
One more time.
I'm still smiling.
Thank you. You can see it in the eyes, right?
Jason, or Ms. Bradshaw, that's fine. Ms. Bradshaw, come on. To Ms. Bradshaw.
Hello, Ms. Bradshaw. Fine, how are you tonight? Alright, we have to get you to hold the red, so hold on just a minute.
Okay.
If you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, do you, Margaret Bradshaw, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Person County Schools Board of Education? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations, Ms. Bradshaw.
Thank you.
This is your oath, and the code of ethics was behind it.
Maybe it had camera captured her this week.
Oh, me? Okay. Well, I need to fix him.
Up and out. He would've been when I told him not to get that.
And Ms. Bradshaw, if I could get you to sign, stand on either side of the sign right there.
Okay. Say cheese.
One more time.
We should all have cheese masks on tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
What I should've done, probably, was wear a mask.
With the teeth already on.
Yeah.
Who's next? Oh, Woody. Go right on up there. Alright, I want you two to stand right here, and whoever's gonna hold the Bible. And you stand right next to her. Alright, and so, Jason, if you would, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Face me. Palefoot. Do you, Jason S., excuse me, Jason E. Torian, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties as in the office as a member of the Person County Schools Board of Education? So help you God. Congratulations, sir. Welcome.
And Mr. Torian, you got your oath behind you. If you'd sign that, and there's a code of ethics page behind you as well. And we'll make a copy, and make sure you get it to you.
And that, if you'd all stand by that sign, we'll get a family shot also. Okay, and if, you can just leave it there, Mr. Torian, and then if you all just wanna stand in front of the sign together, we'll get a picture.
I'm smiling like.
Say cheese.
One more time?
Thank you.
In the name of all your future duties, you can have the pen. We'd like to give a party.
Come on in, Ms. Tillman.
I know, I'm so glad. She needs to hold that holy word.
Can we switch their spots? That way it won't be quite as awkward to hold the.
Yeah. You stand up on the side.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you, Frida S. Tillman, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Person County Schools Board of Education? So help you God. Congratulations, Ms. Tillman.
And Ms. Tillman, your code of ethics and your oath of office behind you.
Right behind you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
You're quite welcome, Ms. Bradshaw.
She's one of my employees.
That's my boss, lover to death.
And ladies, if you would stand in front of the sign together, one on each side, please.
Alright.
Alright.
One more time?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll drop it off right here. Oh, Lord. I'll, I'll talk to you in the morning.
She thought she was gonna make her, I mean.
No, I've already eaten, but I, I'll talk to her in the morning.
It's Tillman, that's right, that's the last one.
Oh, yes. You get to go right on up there with her.
Oh, you got, come right on right now. And if you will let her come right here, is she gonna hold your Bible? Oh, there it is, okay. And you wanna be, wanna be on this other side of mine?
Sure.
Okay. How are y'all tonight?
Very, very good.
Good, good. So, Ms. Tillman, if you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, do you solemnly, Harriet J. Tillman, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Person County Schools Board of Education? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations, Ms. Tillman.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Now, you gotta execute some stuff right there.
Okay.
Your oath is on top.
Mr. Tillman, don't go too far, we have to get a photo when she's done.
And there's a code of ethics behind that, I think that the superintendent asked you to sign.
You know, I only used to be called Mr. Tillman when I was getting ready to be punished by my parents. And every time I hear Mr. Tillman, it's like, oh, what have I done? Am I gonna get a spanking? Things stick with you through childhood.
Absolutely.
Alright, and you all would stand in front of the sign there? I'll go twice. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I guess, congratulations.
Love you. Congratulations.
You too.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you for inviting us.
May be the first to congratulate all of you. I look forward to working with you over the next four years. At this time, we will turn our attention to the organization of the board, and I will entertain nominees for the election of chairperson.
I nominate for you Tillman.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close nominations for chairperson?
Make a motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Then moved and properly second, if we close the nominations for the election of chairperson. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Tillman. Would you like to do the nominations for vice chair, or would you like me to do it?
You can proceed.
Okay. At this time, we'll take nominees for vice chairperson.
I nominate Philip Gillis.
Okay. Any other nominees? Hearing none, do I have, does someone wanna make a motion to close the nominations for vice chairperson?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Been moved and properly second to close the nominations for vice chairperson. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, hearing, congratulations, Mr. Gillis.
Excellent.
At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Tillman.
And good evening, everyone. We do want to welcome our new board member, Mr. Jason Torian, this evening. And at this time, we would have all the in public comments.
Good evening, everyone. We have one public, public comment this evening from Vax Allen. Good evening, I would like the school board, along with the Race Equity Council, to consider and adopt an equity statement for Person County Schools. I believe this is necessary because of the inequities that have come to light during this time of COVID and racial divide. I would also like to recommend that the school board would consider an African-American Culture Week during the month of February. I think this will be the first step in ensuring the community that we believe in a more equitable system. Thank you for all you do for our educators and students.
Alright, at this time, we will move to our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes from the minutes of November sixteenth. Is there one here that I could look over the minutes? Is there any discussion? At this time, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes from November sixteen twenty twenty as presented.
I'm going to approve the minutes as presented for November sixteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a motion to second the full. All those in favor approve the minutes, so please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. I said, motion is carried. This time, Dr. Peterson, are there adjustments to the agenda?
Actually, we do, Madam Chairwoman. We have an additional speech contract that was finalized this week with Therapy Travelers. I have put a copy of that at your, at your table. If we can add that as item two under my report. And then, if we could change, if it pleases the board, if we can change item A one, which is the COVID update from an information item to an action item.
Alright, is there a motion, if it's time to approve the adjustments to the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, the motion is carried. At this time, we have a code of update by Dr. Peterson.
Well, there has been some things that have changed since our last meeting in November, and I'm gonna try to do justice to go through those changes. In addition, we're going, staff members are outside, is that correct? Is, so, staff members around? So, if, you know, if you got questions about anything, I'm gonna be quite candid with you, we, we kinda do this by committee. And if you got questions, feel free to ask them. But the, the first one is, this is, this is the latest numbers from today. I pulled this this afternoon. And you'll see that the overall test to positivity rate has gone up just a snip to six point one nine. I will say to you that last week was, was a long week. Last week, we had, was, was in the timeframe of the, of the Thanksgiving holiday. So, all of you know that we closed Helena with a, with a COVID cluster on Sunday. And we've had some, we, we reported out, if you don't know, those of you in the public watching, we do have a dashboard on our webpage that we report by week, by school, any COVID cases and quarantines. So, if you wanted to see how the pattern has gone, then you'll be able to notice that. I think you'll see, make a little spike from last week. This week's numbers tend to be, across our fingers, lower. And I think that's as a result of us getting out of that window of Thanksgiving. But I think what you're, what you're gonna see in our next chart is indicative of what's happened in Person County as a whole. So, some of our numbers have gone up, and I'll share, well, we'll share those in a few minutes. To this date, we can't say that we have, we can't say that we've had in-school transmission. A lot of our contact tracing tends to come from the community, and a lot of our folks are getting caught up in the contact tracing as it comes to quarantine. I will say that, and I'll, I'll say it every month, until we get out of COVID, we had a very clear definition of what we would look at in terms of closing a school. And we said, if there was five active cases, whether they were from day one to day fourteen, if there were five active cases, then we would close the school down. And that's what happened with Helena. What I will say to you is that, in many of our cases where we've had closed schools, we've had multiple positives in one house. But we don't differentiate from that. So, I think that's important for the public to know. It's, it's not like it's, we extrapolate it out. If it's, if, like, my family has four children. If all four of my children were to get COVID, then it would have an impact on both the middle school and elementary and the high school. So, in this particular case, last week, we did, we did have three members of one family that, that had, yeah, no, two, sorry, two members that were actively had COVID. So, I think that's important for the public to understand, too. So, if we have a, and I think what we've grown to love about Person County is that we're small, and everybody's related. But in times of a pandemic, sometimes that ain't the best thing in the world either. And I just encourage the community to do the three W's. Wash your hands, wear your mask, stay six feet apart. And so, we can keep our schools open. The biggest change, and there is gonna be another change based on information that we got yesterday, but until it's official, I'm not gonna say it. But there hasn't a shift from a fourteen-day quarantine to a ten-day quarantine. As a close contact, I think that would help us in getting our staff back in the building who are, who are not symptomatic. But if, but if they, if someone remains asymptomatic for ten days, then they can come back, they can come back into the building. Whereas, up until last week, or up until Friday of last week, or until Monday of this week, you had to stay out for fourteen days. You have to complete the entire ten days from the last day of a close contact. This is an interesting piece here, because as more people are getting tested, we do have some delays in test results coming back. So, if Ms. Bradshaw and I, if I were to track COVID, and Ms. Bradshaw was with me seven days ago, but I didn't find, we didn't find out until four days, then it, it isn't the ten days from the day that we find out, it's the ten days from when the close contact exists. So, you may hear people say, we know Rodden was only out three days, or Rodden was only out four days. I think it's important to understand, it's from the last day of close contact. We do encourage our employees and our, our families to self-monitor for ten days for any symptoms. If no symptoms are developed, then the ten, at the end of the tenth day, they can return to school. There is no negative test that is required. So, as long as they stay asymptomatic for ten days. However, if symptoms do develop during the ten-day close contact, needs to contact their personal care provider for testing. And at that point, they're symptomatic, and the ten days of quarantine can't apply anymore. And they've gotta isolate, and their test results will guide whether or not they come back into our buildings, or until they can come back to work. The other thing that has happened, and I'm, I'm modeling the new mask that we have at the high school. All athletes have to wear masks now, even in competition. That, that has changed. If you watch the volleyball games on, on the live feed, you'll notice that our girls have been wearing any, any workouts that are happening indoor or outdoor, they have to have their mask on. And there is a waiver that athletes can, can complete and send in to get away from that. But at this point, we have not, we do not have an athlete that has done that. We, you know, basketball season's coming up. That's gonna get interesting to see how student athletes respond, running up and down the court. They did start practice on Monday, and so, they're, they're getting acclimated to have to do physical activity with a mask on. So, those are kinda the biggest changes to the rules. These are your numbers. Again, let me remind everybody, these aren't the numbers from one month to another. These are numbers from the beginning of the school year. I will say that we do not keep up with virtual numbers as much as we do with the kids that are in hybrid. And, 'cause we're at the mercy of whether or not the Health Department identifies that, the hybrid students. But we, we have daily, it seems like, I think we say we have daily conversations with the Health Department. They have been really good to work with, and they are a really good partner with us. But you'll, you'll see the numbers. And the quarantine numbers for exposures are, are getting high. I will tell you, we do things a little different here in Person County. I was in meetings last week, and one of the meetings that I had was with school systems that were, that were similar to us, that, that are in school. If we have a student or a, if we have a student or a staff member that's COVID positive in a class, we don't care if it's six feet or not. We, we quarantine the entire class. I think that's important to know. A lot of other systems actually do the contact tracing to talk, to identify the six-foot radius. Again, back in July, when we talked about opening up schools, that was one of the litmus tests that we had. And as the exposure days change, we may look at, we may look at things a little different. But I think that's one thing that the public needs to understand, is that we're a little atypical than a lot of other districts. We shut a school, that, we shut, excuse me, we shut a classroom down if there's any contact with a COVID. We don't, we don't care if it's six feet or not. And then, we do the, the cleaning and all that before the room is opened back up. We are very different than a lot of our partner districts that are similar to us. Last week was a very interesting week, because we got guidance from the state as it relates to testing. We got it on Friday morning at eleven forty, we, I left at eleven forty-five and came directly here and started meeting with Ms. Holmes about what we should be doing with our testing program. We have, I think, a very robust protocol that we've established with both the high school and PSL as it relates to our local exams, so I'm not really worried about our local exams. But what we don't have a lot of leeway with is how we handle state exams. So, these are all the state-required exams that students have to sit for, period, to get credit for the class. We were reminded on Friday that the twenty percent rule is considered statute. In other words, you, there's no way around it, you have to do it. In other words, you, there's no way around it, you have to do it. We, we did and we were approved for an extended window, so we did utilize that. This past week on Monday and Tuesday, we did reviews online. And then on Wednesday, we had our virtual students come in and do the testing today. And tomorrow, we have Plan B kids that are on B schedule. And then Monday and Tuesday, we will have Plan B students that are on A schedule, that will be in the building testing. So we had fifty-five virtual students that were required to take state exams. We had thirty-three of those students that have tested. We do have several parents that has indicated to us, which they are able to do, is that they would take the exams in the spring. During the spring testing window, the students that are, have taken the, have taken the classes, have until June thirtieth to sit for the exam. What would happen if they don't sit for the exam is that they would just be given an incomplete. And if, and if their grades are as such that the two nine weeks average would result in a passing grade, and it is a prerequisite course for something they need to take in the spring, then they will be enrolled in the second, the second level of that course. I'm thinking AP US History, college, first part is Lord of Honors and then it rolls into an AP. We have some kids that are doing honors math one that will enroll into honors math two in the second semester. They kind of get ahead so that they can do the dual enrollment in junior, senior years. If they're passing the course, then we're not, the incomplete's not going to hold them back from taking the, the second level of the course. We did have two, we had twelve students that did not attend the state exam that we, that we know about. And then we had eight students that we will automatically submit medical waivers for because they were in quarantine during the testing period. And what we were told month or Wednesday is if they're in man, if they're in mandatory quarantine from the, from your local health department, then they would be exempt from having to take the exam. And at the high school, we did have eight students that met that criteria, so, so that will, we will fill those out for those students.
Dr. Peterson, what happens if those that are delaying taking the exam until spring? What happens if they don't take it?
They don't get credit for the course. Under the current guidelines from the state. What I will say to you is the, the reporting that we're receiving is there seems to be some, some leeway in that the state board is and will be requesting a state waiver for accountability. And I think that's important to understand, you've got testing and then you have accountability. They're not going to, they're not going to waive the testing. What they're looking at doing is asking the federal government and the general assembly a waiver for the accountability side of it, where the accountability notes whether or not the teacher's EVOs scores. The accountability takes the growth of the particular school. The accountability determines whether or not a school is in good standing versus whether or not they're in school in improvement. What was said and what I do agree with is that they feel like the state board wants us to take the exams so that we know where, where we're at, so we can identify where the gaps are. And I, and I agree with that, even though that our, our NC check-ins and, and our, our summative or formative assessments kind of give us that information already, so we can make changes to our instruction as we need to. I think kids taking the exam will, will give us even more further data to determine. And the summer, how we would use that data is looking at A, individual kids and what, what gaps they need to close. But more importantly, look at whether or not we need to change our scope and sequences and how we need to change our scope and sequences and our pacing guides to pick up strategies and, and objectives that we know that our students aren't successful in. So that's kind of where we're at. We were told on Wednesday that they were going to submit the waiver on January the twentieth. January the twentieth, as everybody knows, is when the new administration gets inaugurated in Washington. The reason why they're not submitting beforehand, because they have been told very clearly not to submit, because it's not going to be approved. Georgia has done it and they have been denied and individual school districts have done it and they have also been denied. So more to come on this one, pay attention to school board association updates when you get those, because a lot of times they send you guys alerts to talk to our local legislatures about items and topics that, that they want you to address with our local delegation, so they understand locally what our issues are with it. So to go back to, to answer your question, if we were to get a waiver for accountability, I don't know if the state would still waive the requirement of the kid having to take, the student having to take the test. Part of the waiver for the testing is the ninety-five percent rule. Just to remind everybody, if we don't hit the ninety-five, let's, let's give an example. If a hundred students take the test, it's expected that ninety-five percent sit for the exam. Any, every student under the ninety-five percent, then we are automatically given a failing grade that will be calculated into non-proficiency in our proficient score. So that's the other piece to the, the waiver. I personally think it would all be dependent on how our state either reacts or how our state, where our state is on the pandemic side. The, the parents that have spoken to us, they, they have indicated that they're willing to come in in the spring. I, I've said it in here, that if I was, had a kid on Plan C, you know, if there was a way that I didn't have to take the test tomorrow, I would, you know, I probably wouldn't take it, I wouldn't send my kid to school either, because, you know, there's a reason why I want to be on Plan C. I think our goal on the local side is not to kill a kid on exams. And then our goal also on the state side is to work with our students and our parents to the, to, at the max possible, so that exam doesn't define the kid's credit or who they are as a student. So that's kind of where we're at on, on the exam part. And I'm very thankful for PSL and, and the high school for having some very strong conversations around this. And I think they both have very solid plans to ensure that a student can continue on their academic career if they have met the course requirements on the, on the teacher's side. Any other questions on this?
Just to clarify, the twelve students who didn't take it, will they automatically be moved to spring or do they have to request that?
No, if they're, if they are, in our conversations with both schools, if the student is, is passing the course on the, on the teacher's side, then yeah, they would automatically be moved to the next level. There's no request for it.
Well, you had mentioned, you had mentioned the possibility of taking the exam in the spring. Would they automatically be moved to that group that would take it?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, we, Ms. Holmes keeps up with the participation. So every kid that doesn't take, you'll be notified in the spring. Hey, we didn't take in the fall, you, you have this, there is a testing window at the end of the school and then there's also a testing window in the summer. And you, you're going to have to take it in one of those windows, the ones that did not, did not take percent. So there's ample time to meet that. And then, the both, both schools do a very good job of having review time too. And those students would, I think it's at the high school Rocket Seminar, they will have a review timed in the Rocket Seminar. And I don't want to get the PSL one wrong, but they have a very similar time that they work with students to review work as well. The thing, the reason why we wanted to change the information for COVID to an action item is I've had a lot of conversation with staff. I think what we do, probably do more of than, than we, well, I, I don't know, I always like to review everything that we do anyway. I think I'm a little overkill on some of the things about our processes. I was very concerned about the number of cases that was coming to us after Thanksgiving. And in terms of contact tracing and having to quarantine, we have a very limited number of bus drivers to begin with. We have a very limited number of child nutrition employees. I think in terms of teachers, we were, we were, we were on the brink of some, of, of having to call you and say, hey, I don't think we can get enough subs to do this. The subs aren't, aren't coming in the building like, like they do on a regular school year. And a lot of them, you know, they, they meet the definition of being high risk, so I wouldn't want them in a building to begin with. What, what our staff is recommending is obviously Christmas is on the twenty-fifth and New Year's Day is January first. We are, I think PSL is scheduled to be back on the fifth of January, which is Tuesday. And then everybody is scheduled to be back on the sixth. What we're recommending is if we can make the fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth a all Plan C for everyone, so that we can get our information and our data from the health department to make sure that we don't have issues with the holidays of, of a COVID spread. That way we can, we can be proactive rather than reactive. And then we can always review the data during that week to make a decision whether or not, A, is it safe to come back to school? Or, and do we have the staff to be able to come back to school? I personally think that Christmas and the New Year's is going to be a little bit more active than Thanksgiving. Because I know my family limited ourselves on Thanksgiving, but it's going to be hard to do that every Christmas. I mean, that's just a minute. Christmas is, for a lot of families, is a special time. So what we're recommending is we'd be in Plan C for all students for January five, six, seven, eight. And then if the data suggests and we don't have quarantines or we have to shut down schools or whatnot, if everything is the way it should be, then we can proceed with Plan A, B and C beginning on Monday, January eleventh. That would be our recommendation to the board. I think this, if we were to do this, this gives our families ample time to get coverage for that week. It's, it's a month out. But I just, our staff was continuing to come in the building to teach virtual from the buildings. To me, that just gives us a few days, a buffer days, because it's ten days out from the first and it's eighteen days out from the twenty-fifth. So if we were going to have a spike or if we, we have a lot of our staff that are going to be, hopefully not, but if the infection rate stay, hopefully stays away from us, but we would know if we have issues with that by that, by that date.
What will you do about technology for elementary?
If you make a decision tonight, then as part of the going home process with students, they will take everything home with them.
So Dr. Peterson, I know that there's some growing concerns in the community about next week being the last week for Christmas. If a parent decided that they wanted a child to be virtual next week instead of coming back face to, if they are face to face, would they be able to go to Plan C for that next week?
I think we can make some accommodations for that, yes ma'am. And I, I told, I had a meeting with our principals today and I told them we would meet based on your decisions tonight. We do have face-to-face exams on Monday and Tuesday. Let me, sorry, let me pull up a calendar. So that would be the what, the fifteenth would be the last day that we, we would have to be required to be face-to-face. There still is some makeup exams on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Based on what we're hearing, there's, there's going to be few and far between. The, the Person High School and, and PSL local exams are being done virtually. So there's, there's not a requirement for the kids to be in the building for that. But yeah, if a parent wanted, I can have a conversation with the principals to be lenient. I will say there has been parents that have called who have termly heal members in their family and they have asked that specific question. And we have staff members that have termly heal family members. And they're wanting to know if there is an option for next week, I will say that. Because they, they realize that if they're in quarantine past Tuesday, then that ten day quarantine is going to extend into Christmas or beyond Christmas.
And I think that's what the concern is, is that they come in contact and then they end up being quarantined during the Christmas holiday.
Yeah.
And I think that's a big concern that they have, so I just want to know that they have that option, that they can, that their child can be virtual if they decide to do so.
If y'all ask what happened, then we'll meet with the principals and make them aware that, that, that needs to be an option for the parent.
What sort of option would the teachers have? Because I'm sure they have the same concerns as those parents as you just mentioned.
Absolutely. Virtual teachers, they're still in the building, they would teach virtually. They'll be quite candid with you, they don't have an option if we're still in face-to-face instruction. Our high schools would have more options than anybody else because of how the exams work out. So I want to, I want to say this to you. You know, you could possibly look at doing Wednesday, Thursday and Friday as a Plan C for everyone. But the high school will have to have a caveat that if you've got to come and make up exams, you know, you've got to physically be there to do it or you have to set the incomplete in your grading for the, for the semester. Because we do have a few kids that have to make up from this week.
And basically, how many students are we talking about coming into the high school room? It's not that great of a number.
The makeups will be very, I mean, y'all, y'all staff, y'all seen makeups. Makeups will be pretty small, right? Because I think, for the most part, I've been very happy with the attendance and the exams. I mean, I was, I was very pleasantly surprised this week.
And I know a lot of the students that'll come in, the virtual students anyway, that's coming in to take.
The virtual students came in on Wednesday.
Okay.
And then there, there will be a cleaning after Tuesday and then the makeups will start on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of next week. So yes, the virtual students came in, they came into a very, well, all students have come into a clean, but there was, there was a deep clean on Friday after all the students left.
I was talking about getting feedback from teachers in general, not just right now, but just in general. Where can a teacher go to express concern if he or she is, you know, has some concern about what they're seeing at their school?
The principal. We have an avenue that they can speak directly with HR. Especially if, if their situation has changed in that there may be medical issues that, that they didn't have at the beginning of the year. And we, we accommodate the medical, medical side of it. Yeah, they can, if they have concerns, they can seek out information to the principal. And our principals have been very good about giving us feedback on, on what's out there. But if they have true concerns about health, they do need to contact the HR service, our HR department. And we put that out, we put it out quite a bit. So our recommendation, that the reason why I've asked for action is for us to be in Plan C from the fifth through the eighth and then go back under our current model on January the eleventh. That would be, that's kind of what, what the staff is recommending at this point.
Are there any questions or discussions concerning? The recommendation coming from Dr. Peterson's central office there? Are they going to entertain a motion?
I, I did have, I had, just given some of Mr. Dr. Peterson's statements, I'm concerned by next week. I'm concerned about the, you know, teachers and rest of staff and students having to come in next week. Given that Thanksgiving exposure, then we're seeing those numbers go up right now.
Okay, so I think basically. Okay, so I think basically we're gonna have to do this as two. Or can we combine? Have this discussion with both?
Well, so you can have further discussion or um you can also, someone could make a motion for a certain proposed plan. And we could see if that is seconded or not, um, and if there's discussion on that. Um, or, you know, if someone makes a motion, someone can also make a motion to amend the motion. So, uh, so I think the, um, you can either continue to discuss or um someone can also make a motion and. We would just sort of be guided by um whether there's a second, you know, on, on that motion.
So the motion would be the recommendation comes from Dr. Peterson to go to be remote from January the fifth through the eighth. And return that to plan A and B on the January eleventh. Or we can make a motion to go plan C starting December the sixteenth.
Torian's concerns about being in quarantine over Christmas, the ten day quarantine would start. For someone that would be exposed on Tuesday. That would, that would quarantine them through to twenty fifth. If we were to have, if that were to happen. This week's numbers, what do they look like, Ms. Suggs?
Um, they're much lower than last week. I think we have three staff and. Four or five students this week and only ninety-two in quarantine currently.
So that's kinda, the numbers this week have gone way down versus, we're in, we're in the week beyond Thanksgiving now. But I mean, I truly, I mean, it does where the scenario is given to me this morning. Uh, and scenarios that have been given me by families that they do have concerns about uh being in quarantine over Christmas. What I will say though is um a lot of the quarantine is a result of exposure outside of school. Not knowing becoming COVID and then the quarantine comes as a result of people being in the building. It hasn't come from inside of the building transmission. But I wanna make that clear too, but you can't control what happens on weekends. You can't control. I mean, everybody, we can all go to grocery store tomorrow and, and have an exposure that we don't even know about.
What, what can we take from those numbers? I mean, like before this week, we saw it was thirty-two cases in students, twenty-one cases in staff. Now it's fifty-six cases in students, twenty-five cases in staff. We have so many more students than we have staff, those numbers are so close. What can we get from that? I know there's less transmission supposedly between kids. Is that part of it? Or is there something else that you get from that?
Yeah, I, I think in all, you know, we have a lot of families that teach and, and work in school and children go to our schools.
But of that fifty-six, how many would be only?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we can.
So I just, if, those numbers, are they including the ones at Helena? That's what I need to know because. Being to Helena has not been a session, that might be why the numbers are down.
So, so the students that went home at Helena are not. The whole school is not in quarantine, just the classroom that was infected, right? And I think, um, Mr. Torian, I think your numbers, um, the numbers Dr. Peterson showed are for the entire school year. The numbers on the dashboard are only since we started the dashboard. So there wasn't a huge jump from one to the next. Uh, we are, that, you know, last week it was thirty-two students total and twenty-one staff. And what I, I think I, we'd be at thirty-six students now and twenty-four staff.
It still gets back to that question though, that number's so close together. You know, that ratio seems a little odd. What does that mean for?
What that tells me is that there's not transmission in school. A lot of this is exposure outside. Cause if there, if there was transmission in school, I think we would see a greater number of students being. Uh, identified COVID positive versus part staff with, I mean.
And to my knowledge, um, uh, Dr. Anthony and I have looked at it a lot. Um, I don't, we don't believe that there are any cases, positive cases that have come about from a classroom positive. So by, by doing the quarantining of the entire class, we've stopped any potential spread. And that's throughout since August.
And what I will say about the health department is when in doubt, we're quarantining. I mean, we, I think we go above and beyond what we really need to do. Like I said, a lot of, the feedback I got last week was a lot of people had their own contact tracing teams inside of school. And when the health department calls and says Rodney's positive and we're all in a classroom together, they literally go in classrooms and start measuring. Um, we don't do that. We just say every, so that we don't have a spike. We say the whole classroom is. And I think our num, I think we're, our teachers are, and I can't say enough about our teachers. How they're able to go from face to face to remote. It's pretty remarkable to be quite honest with you. And I, I, I can't, that's not the word I know how to use. I taught third and fourth grade and I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, man, if I had to, if I had to switch like some of our staff has had, I think I, what hair I had left would be gone. And you know, I think about our, it's just, I just can't say enough about our teachers and what, and what they are doing. Uh, if it was, they are the true glue in the system. If they weren't holding it together and having a commitment to our kids, uh, it would have been ugly very, very quick a long time ago.
And those are positive comments that we have heard too, from the community, how you do uh quarantine. You go above, beyond what's required.
From day one that we said these were gonna be the non-negotiables. But Tuesday would be. If, if we want, if you want a recommendation from me, I would think um if you wanted to do plan C on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. But the caveat's got to be that um, if you gotta make up exam, you gotta make up an exam. But this is the other scenario here. What you haven't heard is from your parents. Who have childcare issues. And whether or not we would have opportunities with that set of parents if we were to make a decision this quick. Reason why I'm comfortable making a decision about the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth and, and eight is that it's a full month between now and then.
And it goes back to Ms. Tillman's theory of how you real clear with principals and the parents that they have an option next week to work with. Quarantine and that they would have that op, you know, going back to that sort of, give them that option for it.
Then also, there's seventy-two CTE students that will need to test on Wednesday as well.
That is my concern, being a former high school test coordinator. To throw that monkey wrench into exams, as complicated as it is already. On short notice.
Uh, we do have to take our parents into consideration too. And just like you said, you know, Dr. Peterson said, if a parent opted to, for them to go virtual next week. They would have that opportunity to do that.
But you are right, the, the teachers that are in plan B and plan A will not have that option.
And they, the high school ones have to be there to be with the staff too.
Are there any other discussions, questions, concerns? So this, um, as for a motion for the approval of the. Um, changing the dates for to go to plan C for January the fifth through the eighth. Return that to plan A and B on the eleventh of January two thousand twenty-one.
I wanted to make the, the substitute motion, I can substitute for next week?
So, um. Okay, so either uh, someone can make the motion that uh Ms. Tillman requested. Um, or if no one makes that motion, you can also make your motion now. Um, but even if someone makes Ms. Tillman's motion, you can move to amend that. So, yeah, there will, one way or another, there'll be an opportunity.
I recommend let's get a motion on table. And to see if there's even a, and then we can do it.
I move that um, we have plan C for all students through January eighth, twenty twenty. And on Monday, January eleventh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one. Um, Monday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, uh, elementary return to plan A and students at middle and high. Return to plan C and continue to offer, I mean, plan B and continue to offer plan C option.
Okay, and did you want to make a motion to amend?
Yeah, I wanted to make a motion to amend that, but adding in uh plan C for Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of next week.
Okay, and is there a second to amend the motion? And just to be clear, if there is a second to amend the motion, then we'll vote on whether or not to amend the motion. You're not actually voting on whether or not to take up that plan. So, um, but is there anyone else who would like to? Second, Mr. Torian's motion.
Is there a second?
Okay, so.
The motion does.
Yeah, so, so there's not a second to amend. So the motion by Ms. Till, right, Ms. Tillman's motion? Uh, is still on the table and it's been seconded. So now if you want to call for a vote on that motion. Adopt the, that.
Before we do that, what I will say to you, especially for teachers. Um, we can look at um, if, what I'll do, I'll have a conversation with our principals tomorrow. And if there are extreme circumstances where my wife is at home terminally ill. And extreme situations like that, that, that could adversely affect me if we were to have quarantine. I will work with each individual principal and those individual teachers to look at making some accommodations as we need to. Cause I do know there's one, there is one employee that, that has that issue that's going on right now. But we, we can, we can look at it.
All votes in favor, please vote by saying aye. All right, votes by the same side, so motion carries.
For the record, down the road, those dates need to be changed to twenty twenty-one.
We'll be doing that through March, right? All right, um, the second item under, up under me is the speech contract. Um, we did uh have to terminate a, a current provider and that, that, that contract ended on the thirtieth. And we were able to agree with uh, the traveling or the therapy travelers on. On a service contract with them. Um, and so what the staff has recommended is that we um approve. The speech contract with the tr, therapy travelers so we can meet our obligations for speech therapy services for our students.
So is this, will they be covering all the speech?
No, partials. Yeah, and it's uh, this, the contract is not to exceed seventy thousand. And as, and just as a reminder, anything that we do over fifty thousand comes to the board for approval.
I move to approve contract with um traveling, therapy travelers for speech.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved up to second that we accept the contract as presented by therapy travelers, all in base with that by saying aye. Votes by the same side. All right, aye, say it, motion carries. All right, so we're down to the resources and Mrs. Stacy, what is your name?
Good evening.
North Carolina Education Corps.
Yes, we have a wonderful opportunity. Dr. Peterson has um, was given the opportunity to apply for a. Um, partnership and we were accepted with one of nineteen districts in um tier one and tier two districts that were accepted. Into the North Carolina Education Corps. And I'm just here to tell you all a little bit about that. And um how we're kicking it off and when it starts and how it's going to benefit Person County schools. Um, the North Carolina Education Corps is an initiative that was established this year. Um, for, between the State Board of Education and Governor's Office to deploy talented community members to aid school districts with additional student support services. As you all know, we are struggling in um, in some areas as far as reaching all students. If they're not signing on virtually, if they're not um face to face. And so this is a way to um allow the, the district to have another resource. To assist. Like I said, we are um, we won a nineteen districts that was chosen in the inaugural cohort. Um, what the um North Carolina Education Corps is doing now, actually. Yesterday, we were, um, we submitted names and then they're gonna give us another wave of names on Monday if needed. But they have recruited, they train, they will train and then we'll deploy the core members. And um to provide the additional student services um in our district that we have identified. Dr. Peterson worked with um Mrs. Seek and um curriculum and instruction and with human resources to, to really target what. How could we benefit from this? Um, and so we looked at trying to reach students for attendance reasons, as, as noted. Um, assist students and families navigate with digital learning if needed, additional support with social emotional needs. And then tutoring services for students that um may not quite um. Be reaching a full attention with virtual learning or on the hybrid method. And so those are the three areas that we will focus on. So I bet you're thinking, well, what is this gonna cost for North Carolina schools and how is it gonna cost the district? We were given gear funds this year, which is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds. And they, these are the funds, um, one piece of that, I think it's like three sections of that, but was instruction. Instructional needs and that is where the funds would come from. Our district, we, when looking at the monies that was, that were allocated to Person County schools. I believe we would be able to fund three or four tutors and they will be, they'll be part-time individuals. Um, and they'll be employees of hours. Um, they'll onboard through us. The minimum wage would be thirteen dollars and fifteen cents per hour and they'll work approximately fifteen hours per week. Um, like I said, they'll have training um to really pinpoint what our needs are. Qualifications of the um applicants would be some community college or university coursework, interested in a community service. Um, committed to complete six consecutive months of employment, so run through January through June. And then um, an approved background check. So we have, um, like I said, we submitted our first recommendation of the names from the applications yesterday. We'll um get another wave on Monday and then we will uh reach out to the individuals to see if they meet. And we, they meet our expectations and we'll go from there.
As you know, our middle and high school teachers both do hybrid and virtual learning. Whereas the elementary have dedicated virtual and dedicated um hybrid. We would target the two middle schools and the high school with these folks because our teachers. Are literally wearing themselves out trying to get work in, trying to find kids who didn't attend a class this week. And this is, this is some of the legwork that these folks can do. The other thing that we're having a lot of issues with is math. Um, because a lot of our math is online and so some of the target tutoring for these folks would be in, in the math arena. But the main thing is the social emotional support uh for our middle and high school. And if uh we, we've had conversations with all the three principals and, you know, individuals will be assigned to a school. So that they can go out and target the kids that we have concerns about.
Been really pleased with the applications that we've received and the applicants we received. Um, Tracy and I, Ms. Grads and I were both. Where are we gonna get these out? We're having a hard time getting um employees in general, but um been very pleased with. We want to try to steer away from um virtual because that's why, um, that's one of the reasons. Um, and so the applicants, we do get applicants from um, we didn't think that would be in the vicinity. But um, but we've been really pleased with the caliber and quality. But um, but we've been really pleased with the caliber and quality of applicants that we've received. Any questions? Thank you.
Mrs. Seet, we have some information on the DC data, don't rush me.
Yeah, here I am. I appear.
I don't know why you came in from the hallway.
Good evening, board members, um, welcome, Mr. Torian. Um, I'm Amy Seet, I'm the Chief Academic Officer, so it's very nice to meet you. We have three information items under curriculum and instruction, and you'll see those three item, items listed. Um, I am gonna ask um Ms. Holmes and Ms. Reagan to um present those items to the board. And the first item, it is the um PCS data snapshot for the fall. And um Ms. Reagan will present the JCPC grant and also the enrollment data for the spring. And I will stand over here to support them, there's questions.
So before, before Ms. Holmes gets started, you wanted information about how kids were performing. Uh, what we do have is the snapshots for elementary, middle, and high uh for the first nine weeks. And when we get the data for the second nine weeks, we'd share that with you. Uh, but specifically, a member asked, could you break it down by face to face and by virtual? So this is the report that would, has been requested, so Ms. Holmes.
Yep, and chair, members of the board, Dr. Peterson, good evening. So yes, as Dr. Peterson said, we broke down the first nine weeks uh student performance. And we broke it down by elementary, middle, and high school. And so in the link that is attached to the agenda, when it first opens up, you'll see it is uh elementary's first. And the way it is listed here is we have it broken down by English Language Arts, Maths, Social Studies, and Science. And we have it broken down with all students in the green section. Face to face students is in the yellow section. And virtual students are listed in the pink section. And this was done with a lot of help um from Lily to get it into the format that it's in tonight. Um, but you will notice when we look at elementary, and we'll just start with English Language Arts. Uh, the first pie chart on the top left is all students and their performance. You'll notice that um eighty-six point two percent of students had a passing grade in ELA. And then we broke that down to compare how face to face students did with virtual students. We did not see much of a difference. And then the pie charts below it, we wanted to take a step further and compare it with the I-Ready assessment data to see how that compared. And we did not see, again, much difference in how our students were performing in I-Ready based on the grades they were getting in the classroom. And so you can scroll through and you'll see that math is broken down the same way. Um, really nothing stood out. Um, you know, students seem to be consistent with their school grades and their I-Ready performance. Um, involved between face to face and virtual students. And then you'll notice science and social studies, we just have the grades because we don't have the I-Ready assessment um in those subjects. And then at the top of the page, you can actually click to the next page and that will bring you to the middle school data. And the middle school is broken up uh is the same way, um, all students face to face and virtual. The only difference on this page would be that we substituted I-Ready for Lexia in ELA and Galileo for math. Um, but again, just like elementary, we really didn't see much of a difference in the student performance with their grades for face to face and virtual. Many of our face to face students were performing about the same um grade wise in Lexia and Galileo with our virtual students. And then our last page brings us to high school. We did see a little bit of a discrepancy here in, at the high school. Uh, we pulled our EOC courses, so that would be English two, Math one, Math three, and Biology. Um, we did notice that our face to face students were performing, um, had passing scores, more passing scores than our virtual students. Um, and I know we presented last board meeting on things that we were doing differently to um help increase this for the second nine weeks. So we would likely present what the second nine weeks looks like um when we do finalize those grades. Are there any questions?
I just wanna say, this is awesome.
Yes.
Lily did, Lily did, was a huge factor in putting this in.
When you can go through and you can do by grade level and you can do by school and it, it is phenomenal.
Yeah.
You know, I think. Uh, isn't with the weekend here, like the ethnicity of the children, um, you can get percentages put into as well?
We do have um it broken down by ethnicity, um, we can.
We have it just for um who was virtual and who was hybrid.
Not by subject.
Face to face, but it's not by subject.
We can share that with you.
Yes, and we'll be glad to share that.
Okay.
I tell you what, can you make a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Just so that, just so you know, elementary, uh, well, you'll get the, the, the document. But it breaks down what percentage of students were in face to face versus virtual. I will say at the high school, I, I'm very concerned about virtual. Um, I, I think our, I think at the elementary level, there's still a sense of expectation. And in middle school, you know, you start to see a little bit of drop, but it's not as significant as it is in high school. Uh, which is what prompted me, I don't know if y'all remember Mike Ward, he used to be the state school superintendent. Uh, he and I go back, way back to my days at NC State. He called me and said, hey, you know, the governor wants to do something a little different and he's got some money to do it with, and that's, that's the evolution of EdCor. That's the reason why I submitted a grant so that we can get people in here to say, alright, Ms. Tillman, you haven't logged on in three or four days, uh, you need to be logging on. And by the way, I'm Rodney, I'm your mentor and I'm gonna be checking up on you. Um, and we have put in some, no one, haven't seen this data. I know, I know Mr. Torian wasn't here, but all of y'all heard last meeting what we were trying to do differently the second nine weeks. So it's gonna be interesting to see if the changes that we made and how to address some of these concerns is, is gonna show up in the second nine week data. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and tell everybody in this room right now. Um, I'm not, I'm more concerned how the teachers are telling me how our students are doing versus what an in the course or in the grade test. Not saying that they're not important because they are important. Um, but I'm not expecting remarkable things on the in the grade and intercourse test when I've got forty some percent of our kids being virtually taught. Um, and some of them are, some of our kids are doing really well virtually, let me back up a point. They are doing really well, but some of our, our students are not doing well. And um, while it would be nice if we have them face to face, I do understand when a parent says, I don't feel comfortable sitting with my kids at school. And so, um, I do appreciate all the work that went into this because it was very eye opening to me and, and caused us to, to say, hey, what can we do better? And, and we'll do this at the end of every nine weeks. And if we need to make some adjustments, we'll make the adjustments as needed. Um, so, but, and we'll get these too, so you'll have it, you'll know. And then Ms. Reagan is gonna give you what's, what the breakdown is for second semester for middle and high as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Holmes on the day before she leaves? She can't get out that question. That's how she just, yeah, that's how she just started running out the door. Alright. And this is another opportunity that has come about based on the data too. And um, and I hope it's good with them.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So, um, this is a grant opportunity that has been presented to us. So JCPC um in, in collaboration with the Orange County Dispute Resolution Center, um, submitted a grant proposal on our behalf and it was accepted. Um, so the Orange County Dispute Center um will be working with Person High School to come up with a plan to meet the needs of some of our students who um have a variety of needs. And so in the information I've shared with you, I've listed out what some of those things are. Um, in our discussion, we really liked the idea of leaning towards the proactive um pieces that they presented to us. Um, we do have a meeting scheduled for early in January where we'll sit down and go through more of the details. Um, but just in our initial planning, we would like to have a set date and time, like a certain day, a certain time, where the group will come to us and come to the high school, whether that's virtual or face to face. Um, I'm not really sure yet, but they would come and have a certain group of students that they're working with. And that group of students may change over time based on the needs. Um, but we really want to focus on the, the relationship piece and that proactive piece out of all the information that they um have presented. Um, it's also very flexible, um, the people from the dispute center have been very kind. Um, and I'm very excited about the opportunity and that they are gonna customize it to meet our needs. Um, and that may change over the semester and they are willing to work with us on that. So it's a very exciting opportunity, it's one that I hope we will be able to expand on in the future. I hope to be able to come back to you in a couple of months and tell you the good things that's happening from it. Is there any questions?
And I wanted to reach out, I wanted to say thank you to David Carter, who's the court counselor for our area that he called me. To be quite honest with you, he kinda threw me into the mix without telling me what was going on. And um, in our second conversation with the Orange County Dispute Center, um, and the things that I was able to find out what they were doing with Orange County and Chapel Hill Carver Schools, I think this could be a very good fit uh for some, to avert uh either kids being sent to um through the juvenile system or to what I think, where our focus is gonna be on um quelling any issues before they get to the level of suspension. So we're gonna be addressing the suspension piece here with, with them. And I, I was very impressed with the group and I'm sure Jenna was too, and I look, and they're willing to accommodate us, so.
And the people from Orange County have had very positive things to say about their experience.
Some more to come on now.
Any questions? Do we know that?
Second day of the week?
Yes.
Playing a role at the state.
Print everything.
Alright, so.
Mr. Torian, we gotta train Mr. Torian and all these wonderful folders that he has.
So this is the projected numbers um as of this morning for second semester. I, I updated it, if you looked at this earlier, you'll see that um, and I didn't change my updated date, but I actually went in and updated it again this morning, um, just so it would be more accurate. Um, and we got about ten percent more information on here than what we had before as far as responses. Um, so right now, our projection is forty-nine percent students will be hybrid, thirty percent virtual. Um, for the students who we did not have a response for, we have our staff reaching, reaching out, making personal phone calls to those students, um, scheduling is well underway as my secondary people know. That's something that, that can't be done last minute, so um Person has been working on that for quite a while and middle school as well. Um, so phone calls are being made one by one. And, yeah, I can't be, I couldn't be more proud of our principals and our counselors for um, the way that they have just embraced the challenge of scheduling this year. It has been a scheduling year like none other and they have done a phenomenal job still trying to get that, the element of choice that we have worked so hard over the past four years to, to give, um, while still meeting all of the additional challenges of the year. So a lot of personalization has gone into that. Any questions about these numbers? At the top, you can see that we just put what our numbers are currently for this semester, just so you have a reference.
So they look like they're not the same. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, if you can give me a minute to get Julie home.
Give it home for a financial service so she can hear it.
Julie, are you with me? Can you unmute yourself, Julie? Julie, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Julie?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you're up, go for it.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Do you hear me?
She's got a little lag.
You, you got a little lag, but that's alright.
No. Thought I was. I hear you, I can hear you. Okay, you hear me?
Yes.
Yay, okay, um. Alright, you can still hear me, yes? Okay, um, sorry. I'm gonna, I have to, I can't hear you.
Nobody's talking to you.
Can you still hear me? Okay, cause I can't hear y'all. Um, the first item we have is the uh LMC service contract. And that contract is for onsite coaching for up to five principals, which includes ment- um mentoring and leadership coaching for principals, analysis of school data, schedules, procedures, and policies, um, including recommendations for improvement. We have approved this in the past. Um, but because of the threshold of the amount being over fifty thousand, it has to be approved by the board. So I'm seeking approval by principals today. Uh, mentoring and leadership coaching for principals, analysis of school data.
She's got her.
Schedules, procedures, and policies, um, including recommendations for improvement. We have approved this in the past, um, but because of the threshold of the amount being over fifty thousand, it has to be approved by the board, so I'm seeking approval by principals today. Uh, mentoring and leadership coaching for principals, analysis of data.
Okay, there we go. I added two more principals to this list this year. Um, because of um not evaluative, but of things that we discussed in their evaluation that they wanted to improve on. I feel like on the coaching side, for me, when I say, Ms. Tillman, I need for you to do something, they're, they're looking at it as a very evaluative, which I probably would if I was a principal. So I've hired, uh, we've, we're wanting a contract with Dr. Lily Cox and Dr. Mary Ellis, who's a former superintendent. I feel like on the coaching side, for me, when I say.
Dr. Peterson, can you call her and we just put her on speakerphone?
Call her, yeah. Promise, she's got a.
Just tell her to be quiet, just tell her to be in here.
There you go, I muted her. So, there's some of it all up, I've got, we, I have two principals that asked to do specific things and rather me doing the coaching, um, we, I've asked these individuals to do it so that it isn't any evaluative piece. We do use uh, um, these two individuals for the schools that are in school improvement. If, if y'all remember back, uh, I guess it was in this, it had to been last spring or summer or before, it would've been seven, eighteen, nineteen. Schools that are in school improvement, you have to have a, a direction plan for the principal if you choose to keep the principal in the chair. And so we have added this as part of their PGP for those schools that are in school improvement. So the reason why we're above the fifty thousand threshold is because I added the two principals. So just wanna make sure everybody understands that. Are there any questions for Ms. Julie or me?
Ms. Manson? You're there, right, Julie?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Okay.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Are there any? Yes, yes, yes.
You don't hear that noise?
Just kick.
Tell her to mute herself.
Just kick her out.
Kick me out.
Stay on the phone.
Mute your, mute your, mute your computer, Julie, we, we've got you on the telephone.
What we have on the telephone is additional questions or concern you want to ask Ms. Manson of, of Dr. Peterson about the LMC principal contract, coaching contract. So here and now, I ask for a motion to adopt, approve the LCM. So here now, I ask for a motion to adopt, approve the LCM principal coaching contract that was presented.
How many principals are we doing?
Five total. It's three that are in school improvement and two additional ones that I added based on their feedback from their, uh, evaluation. Cause in our evaluation, we talk about things that they want to improve on for next year. I'll give you a great example. Dr. Hill asked for additional help. So this individual has helped him court, um, or is, is Jenna out there? Ms. Reagan?
Probably not. It's her birthday. She probably.
Hey, happy birthday. But like, Dr. Hill has, had used, has utilized Dr. Ellis, uh, to reevaluate and redo biology. He's also working, uh, with her on several other things that he wants to do through the high school.
ACT.
ACT prep was another one. Those are the things that his principals, and again, I can't say enough about principals. The one that, they recognize what we need to work on. And they're just saying, hey, can I have some help with it? And to be honest with you, it's a lot easier to have one-on-one help on people that I know that can get the work, that can help us get the work done versus sending them to a conference or something, uh, to maybe get something. So there, there's, there's very direct, direct, um, coaching, but also resource utilization. But that's, that's an example of one that has, they're not in school improvement, but we added him, so that he can get some direction on his target goals.
Dr. Ellis has made some great connections with biology. I guess, done some great work done there.
I move to approve the, um, contract for coaching, principal coaching.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think the board is saying that we approve the LMC principal coaching contract as presented. All those in favor, please go by saying aye. All of the same sign, here now the motion carried. Alright, so we, Ms. Manson back for the coronavirus relief fund update. Is she on there?
Julie?
Yes, y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the last item I have for you is a spreadsheet of data that we have collected on the state, uh, COVID funds. These funds all expire December the 30th, and we have to submit a monthly report to DPI, about different metrics that they are requesting. So you'll see as of November 30th, our metrics that we have reported. On your spreadsheet, you showed the bottom remaining balance of 74,000. That was on November 30th. So as of today, we have encumbered all of those funds and we will be getting our invoices together and submitting payment for those next week to make sure that they're all spent by December 30th.
Julie, when you have a second, could you please give the board members access to that?
Yes.
They can see it on the screen, but.
Okay, I'll do it. Are there any questions?
Alright, you should have access. Remember these are, again, these are the COVID funds that came down in August from the governor's office.
Alright, any, any additional question you want to ask Mrs. Manson? This is informational, so it's not an action item.
Alright. Hope this other one works better.
Alright, at this time we have.
Mr. Gordon, are you there with us tonight?
Auxiliary services, if you're there.
Dr. Peterson, board. We have a, bringing before you tonight, uh, a DPI survey. Every five years, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction requires all school systems in the state to complete what is called a facility need survey. A link on our agenda is a zero to five-year plan and a six to 10-year plan. Tonight, we have, uh, Ed Gordon from Smith Senate Architecture, who, um, has worked, him, uh, him, him and his staff has worked hard on this five-year plan. And, uh, he, if Dr. Peterson can get him up, he's going to be online presenting this five-year plan.
Mr. Gordon, are you there with us? I may have to do it. Cause I don't have a problem.
Yes, Mr. Gordon. Yes, I can, uh, put you on speakerphone now. Alright. You're on speakerphone now, Mr. Gordon.
Alright, well, thank you for having me. And just to get a note, I can see Dr. Peterson, but all of a sudden my audio broke out. Can you hear me fine?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
And I've, and I've got your, I've got your screen on our TVs in here, Mr. Gordon.
Okay, thank you. And I, I apologize for asking this question, but I just kind of want to get it all the way. You have new board members who don't know what I've done or what we've been doing for the past couple of years?
Yes, sir, one.
Okay. Well, welcome. This may be really new to you. The rest of you kind of know what's going on. So to, to go along with what Chris has said, um, I'm going to start out by saying that what I'm going to talk about is not a request for funding from anyone. This is a report the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction has been requiring every LEA in the state of North Carolina to give them every five years since the, I think it was about the mid eighties when this started. This is, again, all it is is a report of the needs. So, uh, Chris, um, Larry King and I have launched these 20-year schools. And a couple of years ago, we, uh, we published this, which is a, a kind of an in-depth explanation of all of the needs of your schools. It's not talking about you got a broken bolt on the door hinge or something. That's something that Chris can work on. It's talking about big ticket items and things that are integral to get equity among all of your students. So what I'm showing you right here is, is the program. It's an access program that the state of North Carolina put together so that everybody in the state can get stuff to them. You, you have a lot of needs. This is just a facility thing, street facility thing. I'm glad I'm not dealing with all the COVID stuff you guys are, but. So there are some, some pretty large numbers and some things we have to look at when we're talking about capacities. So one of the first things that they ask for is a, a capacity assessment of each school. We run through that for a zero to five-year and a six to 10-year. The, the thing is they want us to tell them how much money we need to fix roofs, doors, windows, mechanical systems. That's where it comes into a zero to five-year and a zero to six, sorry, a six to 10-year kind of assessment. What they do with these numbers is they go back and get together and talk about putting together a bond issue. The last time we had a statewide bond issue was in 96. So this is not something that's probably going to come about again, but what we've done to the best of our ability is put together a handful of things that address capacity, equity, and trying to get all the ADA and safety things kind of addressed throughout the school system. It's, it's been a handful of years putting this together, but this is kind of the, the end of what they need, what, what the Department of Public Instruction needs. And the, the fun part about all of this is the Department of Public Construction asks for this. A signed letter from your chair saying that these are our needs and they're representative, representative of our school system. That is followed by a signature from the Board of Commissioners that says this does not necessarily constitute endorsement of our commitment to fund facilities. There's a lot of numbers in here and, um, we can really go into detail as much as anybody wants, but the effect of this is that it's not a request and pretty much nothing changes. It's a requirement of the state.
Now, we had, I did, I will let you know that I had a, um, I sent this information to, um, Ms. York. Hi, she says she knows it's coming. And I don't feel the need to get together with the commissioners unless y'all do to go back through this book. I mean, they know what our needs are. We submitted what our needs are. What this survey is, the, the documents that you have in your, in your, um, in your folder there are the summary pages of what's in this. And I will say that, I, I think the number is like 121 million or something on the bottom line. Um, and I can't reemphasize enough, this isn't a request that we sent upstairs. This is, this is what we're saying to the state. These are our needs based on the facility need survey that has been done. That was approved and asked for by the commissioner, by the way. So, um, unless you want Mr. Gordon to go through all those pages, I don't have a problem with him doing that. But I'll be more than happy, Mr. Torian, when, when you have a few days, we can sit down and go through and, and we can talk about, cause there's our, there's ancillary items that go here about possible options based on monies that could be. And I'd be more than happy to go through all of that with you so I can get Mr. Torian up to date on everything. Just a reminder to everyone here, this is sort of related. I think I shared with everyone that, uh, there is not a mood to entertain a, a whole lot upstairs until they figure out what the impact of Corona has done to property taxes and the revenues from the county. And, and we have been, I've been given the indication that that's probably looking like the summer. But what I will, I think what we do need to pay attention to on this is that HB 30, or H, House Bill 90, excuse me, hasn't been repealed. We still have to meet the obligations of that. And Mr. Clayton is in the middle, that's the K3 class size law. Mr. Clayton's in the midst of going through to see if we, what are our needs are, if we have to have additional classroom space to make that work. I will say, one of the things that we are entertaining up here, based on the feedback we got from our parents, is the idea of having a, and submitting to the state, a virtual academy, where parents who want to continue on Plan C even after the state opens this back up to Plan A for everyone, that we can look at having a plan or a Plan C options for parents. And that may impact some of the K3 class size numbers. But we'll have something moving forward here, probably in February for you around, well, our needs will be for August of next year if we were to be back in school full-time. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Gordon?
No, I think you said it quite well.
Alright. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, any questions for Mr. Gordon?
Thank you.
This is an action item because we had to submit this by January the.
I say you've heard the report of the 2020 facility need survey that needs to be, um, submitted. Here no discussion. Is there a motion to approve?
I approve the, um, Department of Public Instruction, uh, Facility Need Survey as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I say, probably the second that we approve the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction 2020 Facility Need Survey. All those in favor, please go by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the same sign. And this has nothing to do with motion, but it has 12, eight on it. Does it need to be 12 or 12, 10?
I can't hear you.
Should the date be only 12, 10 instead of 12, eight? I'm just asking.
I'll, I'll look at it. Alright, Madam Chairman, unless there's any other things for, um, auxiliary services, I would recommend the board go into closed session to consult with the board's attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege and consider confidential personal information, personnel information and student information for true to general statute.
Is there a motion going closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
As we were about to say, we go into closed session. All those in favor, please go by saying aye. All of the same sign. You and I going to closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Yes, sir.
Bring a sound. Oh, is it? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And, and we shut that thing down?
I'm about to right now. I'm about to right now.
Thank you.